All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Let's go ahead and get started with the City Council Regular Session Meeting, Monday, June 20, 2022. That's seven o'clock. Please stand for the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Page, your Counselor Kendall.
Your.
Counselor Sheldon.
President.
Counselor Smith, Mayor Lindahan.
Here.
Counselor Payton. There she is. And Counselor Martinez is excused.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Item number five is our consent agenda tonight. There are five items under the consent agenda. Resolution number 2190, reappointing Burns and King to the Park City Met Board through June 30, 2024. Resolution number 2195, the Emergency Management Cooperative in a governmental agreement. Approval of the June 10 agenda, City Council Agenda. And then the approval of the June 6 City Council Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Any questions about the other items under the consent agenda?
The move for adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion on the table by Counselor Kendall, submitted by Counselor Page. Any discussion? All those here say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. During that, motion carried. Item six is our public comment, and this is the time that we encourage anyone wanting to speak on anything down in city, city business. Lori, did you receive anything via email?
I do not.
That's all. And I love that our good show is going in the center here, the blue here. There is a person online, and I guess I'm gonna just ask to see if that person wanted to speak during this time, during public comment.
No.
All right. We'll move on then to staff reports. Robin, you're up first.
Yeah, counselors. And I have quite a bit on my report, so I just wanted to mention a few highlights. I think our most exciting highlight today is the Knights of Pimpy has brought four bicycles down to the library today for summer reading prizes. So those will be part of our spin and win prizes for this summer. And so we have two on display in the library, two at the hall right now. But thank you very much. And we also, we've had our new staff member, Maria Humalainen, for a couple weeks now. She's really doing wonderfully, training just very quickly. And so you'll see her at the library on Saturdays. She's gonna be there every Saturday. She works full-time for an East Coast company remotely. And so she's available to work even Saturdays at the library, so it's perfect. And just all kinds of exciting events coming up. And if anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So we see the bone man thing as a pretty big hit.
Oh, yeah. What we, I believe I may have seen your audience.
Yeah, it was a really good time. Thanks for that. Just now we question some of that. Thanks.
Sure. It was really fun. We did, we were almost at capacity here. We only put chairs in the one half of Jetty Maze. And kids sat on the floor in the front. We had 200 people. So it was, and it was, I think the audience really enjoyed it. In fact, we have a comment on Google Maps, you know how people can put a comment by your location? We have a five-star review from Mr. Libby, who was one of the audience participation. He was the gentleman who came up that had the little bubble thing on. So he gave us a five-star review. So.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Any counselors? Counselor Smith.
Yeah, I heard some great comments on the bubble fan. She got 200 people, and I'm not sure how many more people got in here. But I'm still amazed how many people don't hear things. Mentioned, I wish I didn't know about that. I would have went. So I don't know how we're ever gonna.
Well, we made sure that all the, both elementary schools, we visited all the classrooms and talked about it and showed them the clip. And that did our main target audience kicking off summer reading. We also talked about our story times and such. It was a program for all ages, but we did do most of our promotion to the elementary school aged kids.
And the other thing is Sunset Ridge Bingo, huh?
Yeah, picnic bingo, once again, and the first one is this week. Wednesday.
It's Wednesday at five.
Yeah, yeah, you have, okay.
All right, no, because I'm going.
Great. And so it'll be like last year where people can bring a picnic and we'll play bingo for prizes. So we have a great variety of prizes this year.
I think you're gonna get good weather, too. Finally.
Gosh. Yes, that'll be, that'll be nice.
I think you guys are doing a great job putting programs together. It's amazing. Nice to get our parks department the same situation where they don't have volunteers to pull that off, I don't think.
Well, we'll support them however we can.
Do you have any folks signed up for the free Elbow or Supplural Skills Camp?
We have, the last time I checked, the waiting list was nine people. So it's full of nine people on the waiting list.
Right.
Yeah, that starts to sweeten.
Yep. I always love seeing what you do for something. You do some big fun things, so. And it's great that books are really jumping right in there.
Yeah, every, every staff's had ideas that we're doing this summer. It's not just any one person. They all come up with great ideas. And we're doing, we're in a Wednesday again, so be looking for that. And we're doing it in the library and online. So we're gonna choose winners from in-person entries and online entries this year.
And any other comments or questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chief Haxton.
Pretty good, Mayor, Counselors. So for May, it looks like North Plains Officers responded to 297 calls for service. And then I'm gonna jump around a little bit, because you can look down at the numbers. Those numbers are gonna include the 62 hours of overtime, or approximately 62 hours of overtime that we use. That's the, again, just kind of keep you up to speed with that. We're not like we're spending each month of overtime. So we're up a little bit from what we were in the 50 hours. That's good. And you can see, just looking at the numbers, again, the PD calls, service calls, you know, they're, they're in the average range, maybe a little bit high. I don't know. Last year, the numbers seemed to be a lot higher than in 2020. But of course, the number that really jumps off is the self-initiated activity. And again, that's, that's the overtime speaking. That's a lot of, a lot of guys doing good proactive work tonight, stopping cars. So that's what you see there. And again, that's evidence that the reports aren't through the roof either. So it's still not, we're not getting a lot of the PD calls or anyone's stuff stops and contacting major reports. But again, that's the traffic stops and just contacting people. So footfalls, self-initiated stuff. It's just not generating reports. But it shows they're being active. Also, in May, one of the things that we did was we teamed up, you know, schools getting out. And North Plains Elementary, you know, COVID ending, North Plains Elementary School got ahold and they wanted to have the kindergartners come down. So I set up the TV oven R and went down to the station. They actually had their station open up. Literally, I went back and forth. They were closed. They're not closed. Suddenly, like a week before, they were open again. So we were able to make it work. So it'd be kind of a small safety fair. We got some cans and some motor. And they went through and saw the fire truck. So that was really good for the kindergartners. That was pretty fantastic for them. And then, really, let's see, there's, I know I mentioned it in the Chamber Commerce, but there've been a couple burglaries, not necessarily at the end of May, but right at the beginning of June, a couple burglaries in town. That has to do with the rash of burglaries that's going on in the west end of the county. So it's an open investigation. I don't really have a lot of information. All I know is realistically, the two that we tried, they were tempted. So the nice thing is they didn't get in. But we suffered two in close proximity, whereas like Banks and Cornelius in the west end, when I say the west end, the western Hillsborough. They've had multiple burglaries each night in like a one-week span. So someone out there is doing that, unfortunately, get a whole lot of suspect information on the ones we have, but like I said, we still work on.
Would they have done an attempt?
I mean, they didn't actually get in. Yeah, they didn't actually get in.
Or at least give up.
Yeah, for whatever reason, we believe that for the one, the alarm probably went off and the mayor spooked him and scared him away. The other one, I don't really know, because they actually did quite good work to try and get in. They just didn't get in. I don't think they could defeat the deadbolt. So, and again, at the Chamber Commerce, I mentioned that to them. In theory, hopefully, spur in the hay. We want to make sure to provide security cameras if we can and to be more cognizant of the norm. You should always be cognizant, paying attention, but extra careful now, because that is something that's going on. Kind of like what they kind of converted us. That still continues to be a problem. I'm happy to say that Debbie Conway's back to work. Sunday was her first day back, so she's back and healthy, you know. So she's, you know, she's doing totally good. And she's back. She's back to mobility. And that's fantastic for us. Again, I really appreciate Barter's. I know Debbie Barter's really enjoyed working in North Plains. And he's kicking himself for not putting in what he should have. Because now, I know before I told you there wasn't potential a lot of interest, because nobody put in for it. Walden, really wonderful, nice, stepped up for the six months since he kind of figured out his family because of the hours that worked for him. As much as that's true, that the hours still don't work for him, oddly enough, we're gonna get a ton of people, I think, putting in because the word is spread that this is a jet out here in North Plains. And it's actually a really big gate. So I don't know why that information didn't make it out prior to. Maybe they didn't like their supervision. I don't know. But it overcome that hurdle. I think next time, there's gonna be a bunch of people putting in. And I'd say Barter's just kicking himself, because he had to go to the university, so now it's that much. But he did a fantastic job, and he, he's a ten out here. He works really well. Actually does a good job of police and talking to people. So I'm looking forward to him putting back in as well. And it's kind of the last thing I wanted to touch on. I think I hit everything. Really is, this is kind of going forward, but I don't know if you guys know, this National Night Out's coming up. So while really all the events are coming up, so I mean, we're getting hit with 4th of July. So I'm still working on the 4th of July Parade, the Garlic Festival Parade. I know this is, the 4th of July is gonna be competing, because now we, I know it's a little bit later, but two o'clock. But you've got all these other areas we're doing 4th of July parades. Now, it wasn't like last year, which I thought was fantastic, because nobody was doing it. We were the only, we were the only show in town, so that was great. Forty times, not the case this year. But I know we're getting some stuff for that. But National Night Out, we've got it locked down. We're doing the same thing we did last year that we're doing this year, having on a different night than the normal night. This year, August 2nd, Tuesday, August 2nd, is the traditional National Night Out. We were gonna go for Thursday, but we were talking and it didn't work, because there's something we can't get out. That night, that we don't want to have a conflict here. So we jumped it to August 3rd, so Wednesday. So Wednesday, August 3rd, from 6 to 8 mark calendars, that's when the National Night Out will be. And again, it should be very similar to what it was last year with all the stuff that we'll bring in. Try and do a little bit of, as well. So that is really what's coming up. I know that's not necessarily May, but boy, it's gonna get busy here in a little bit. I have questions.
Let us know if you need, you know, any of us counselors, if we're available to help with, you know, National Night Out. If you just need volunteers or anything like that.
Well, for the most part, we're good. I'll get with Robin, she wants to do the library booth as well. The big question is, is, I don't, I don't remember last year if it was NIPA or whether, who it was that did the hot dogs. So if that, if that wants to happen again, then that would be, that'd be fantastic. But that's, you know, that's what they need, what they want to do. But again, I thought, really thought last year was, was pretty spectacular. So I'm hoping for more of the same. And again, I don't know if it's our weather, but it'd be nice if it did happen again to August. I guess, alibi, I did have one last thing, just for information. I know, Mayor, you're familiar with the city manager. I was contacted, I want to say a month or so ago, by a gentleman from Irragon. Because you guys are on the North Plains, was, there's this social media thing or this internet thing, apparently you can find information on it. This, this guy, this gentleman was looking at police services and contracting within Irragon with their sheriff's office and trying to maintain their city, you know, the, the identity of the city. So we were the ones, North Plains, well, they popped up, so he contacted us. And now they're coming out on Wednesday, and they're gonna talk to the sheriff's office. I've got to go talk to Cornelius and their city manager and talk to ours. So good, bad, indifferent, the idea is to lay it all out there and decide whether that's something they want to do or not. And give them all the information. So that's happening this Wednesday. We're gonna be coming down here to Jesse Maze by, I don't know, a good time, but sometime after, probably before. So I guess congratulations to us, because they're seeing something, and it seems to be working. I feel like it's working. So we'll let them know how it's, how it's doing. That should be the last of the last, I don't think I have anything else.
I mentioned seventeen citations this time, which is, I think, the most I've seen in four years. Is there a certain officer that?
I couldn't tell you there's a specific officer, but I know all of us are doing more citations in the sense of, you know, with the speed limit in North Peak over the 25. And the deputies are working on some initiative activity at night. So my guess is a lot more going on, you know, people's, the driving and the way they drive at night is, like I said, it's kind of a racetrack. So I'm guessing that's where the citations are being issued.
What I got, just gonna bring up National Night Out. I'm glad you brought it up. Because I think we waited the last second last year to put that together. And I think Sarah Baker was, at the time, was a big help. She knew.
And Lauren.
Put the pickup. So I'm not sure if we kept that information or not, on what we need to order. You know, my wife had a lot to do with it. My dog's able to help her, so I'm not sure.
Sarah kept the spreadsheet of what we ordered every year and how much, how much was left and all that.
Feeling that you need our help again.
To be mobile.
I better be. My wife pulled me around in a cart. But we got all the hot dogs down. The only thing to cook them over there at Senior Center. I think I don't want to do all that, plus we had some extra help coming.
Any other questions for Chief Haxton?
Thank you.
Bill?
When we, when we end staff report. So not, really, the only interesting thing as far as change from last month is, and I'll talk a little bit about it in a minute, is really just the change in overrebalances, water accounts. We had a weird month. So I'll get to that in a moment. As far as the general funds, streets fund, water fund, things are, how they're performing revenues versus expenses and the categories of expenses that we're tracking for supplemental budget purposes really haven't changed much. So I don't have a ton of updates regarding any of that. For the most part, the vast majority of expense categories and accounts are tracking under budget for the year. But we do have a few related to the UGB planning process. A lot of development review and a few others that are tracking a little bit higher than the one-year, half of the two-year budget. So those, we continue to watch the exact same ones. I'll go ahead and advance to the Water Fund Account Status Report section, because that's the one I just wanted to point out is changing a fair amount. So during the month of May, as of May 31st, for no logical reason, we had 128 accounts that were under 30 days, go late into the 30 to 60-day category, for a total amount of just short of $11,000. We reviewed things. We took a look at door hanger accounts, all of that. There's no great explanation for it, other than it was a weird month.
Was it because of the two auto?
Not really. That, that hasn't, we expect some, some weird changes to occur after July 1, when the new, when the new bill pay system goes live. We've, we're advanced noticing regular auto pay accounts that they can auto, they can, they can register auto pay with their credit card easily now and all that. So we figure there'll be some pickups, not too many big ones. But for the month of May, prior to that, we don't have. There's no great reason. Are people delaying paying their bills because of inflation and something came, expenses came up or something? We don't know. The fact that it fluctuated for one month, there's no, you know, silver bullet exploration for a while. So we just tracked it. The total number of door hangers, everyone kind of given the 72 I noticed, that's been trending down the past couple of months. So really, it was just a movement of a number of accounts into over 30 days, between 30 and 60 days already. And almost all of those accounts don't have like other account balances out 90 days or out 120, which is just this weird, oh. So we're tracking it and watching it and seeing if there's a really great explanation of the reason. But that's kind of the only variation, things that happened over the month of May, I would say, is that right there. The other thing I would just point out, just a few different things. We finally have our fiscal year 21 audit scheduled early August. I don't know, it gets lost in the weeds, but we did have a, one of the big accounting firms that does audits for cities and other governments closed shop. And so all of those agencies had to find other accounting firms. And so it's just been a huge lag. We have other audits, too, that we have to have done. Old URA audits still need to be caught up for whatever reason. But fiscal year 2021 has been scheduled, and so that's a good audit. So that's a nice update. The water billing, modernization, the new wire billing program. Everybody will be able to go online, register, pay their bills, and it's gonna look almost exactly like other utilities and credit card bill and bank account type interface. So it'll be a lot more user-friendly. And frankly, the other thing we're thrilled about is it is going to take a lot less staff time to process all that every month. There was a ton of data entry that used to have to happen, and now it's all going to sort of feed directly into our existing accounting software. So there'll be huge time saver there, too, and accuracy, frankly. This Wednesday, 6 o'clock, 6 to 7, is our local option levy work group. And they will start to, the members of that group, the mayor is in that group. The citizens representatives are volunteers from various boards and committees that we have. And they're just gonna hear about all the things you have over the past few months about the need for enhanced law enforcement services and those costs of how to transition and pay for it. All those things they'll be hearing about and discussing. And coming back to you later, July, August, with, with what they've heard and recommendations for what, what they think would be a good idea for you to consider as far as a local option levy is concerned. Let's see, STCs, the new STCs went into effect on May 20th. The transportation utility fee that you approved and updated, that's July 1. That starts, we're gonna roll out the tough-on-businesses a little bit slower and more gradually, because that methodology change required a lot of homework. We had no idea what building sizes of all the businesses we do now. They're gonna do a massive inventory, but now we know far more about all the different businesses, their buildings, their space usage. And we get to roll that out more gradually, because that's, some of them are probably not completely aware of that either. So that will be rolled out a little bit later. But residents will start paying the new tough on, starting after July 1. Those are kind of big, big stories, nothing crazy exciting, but that's what's gonna happen. So any questions that we have?
For the delay in payments, have you guys been getting data for why? You just want to hear that, this is why I'm sorry, I'm a allocation, or you could just sponsor stuff to you, or you asked, we asked.
Counselor Page, what we typically do is just kind of take a look and see if there were any errors in how they were built or if any kind of, was there any kind of account problem? I mean, that, that number, it seems kind of weird that all, once there would be that number. But we didn't find anything systemic that would explain. But no, we don't ask folks, particularly for this one. We do have folks that are, that have accounts that are much further out. And if anybody has any serious problems paying water bills, we do give them options, including the organization community action that will pay for the delivery balances through the 60 days. Well, we try to be careful of this, there's an error that was causing the problem, so.
It'd be interesting to see if the, if the track continues with the higher cash backs, such.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good point. What kind of what we wondered is maybe they're just regarding other expenses, so we'll find out.
What, what is the average water bill, what's like, $50, $80?
I want to say it's $80, $89, maybe the most common amount.
It's just interesting that that bill would, that bill would be late. I mean, the $200 bill, I can understand that it doesn't, I don't understand it.
Counselor Kendall, I, I think one reason why we're, we're so happy to transition over to the new bill, bill pay system is I think our current system is so different from how people use to pay bills, other types of bills, that that gap in difference just gets worse and more, more and more difficult to track and do for a lot of households, even for not big bills. So that theory comes, you know, is tested after July 1, of course. But I, but we do think that there will be improvement, just by, just by being a more familiar, user-friendly experience to do all that.
So what happens then? Also, another question. When you hang the door hangers out, when do those go out? What, what, what time period is there? What is due on the 20th of the month, right?
It is due on the 20th of the month. Door hang, when, when we do have non-payment, door hangers usually go out Thursday or Friday.
Is that the week?
Late, yeah, the following week. Yeah, just, just so that. What we want to avoid is shutting water up over the weekend. So we give door hanger, we put door hangers out later in the week. They're aware of it over the weekend, and then they have the opportunity first, in the first of the week, to make payment before shut off. But we, but the main thing is we avoid shut offs over the weekend. Yeah.
I think it was something else. I'll see in a moment here. Okay, I want to go up to the general fund, very first block.
Sure.
Help me, help me through this, the general fund. Okay, we budgeted the actual 1.77 billion. And then we budgeted 2.78. So look at the expenses, we paid out 85% income, and the revenue is only 71. So if we've already spent $2 million, how are we gonna get through the next year with, if you only got $200,000? If you're gonna add some more money to that bottom, I don't get it.
Right. So overall, I guess the bigger you're looking at, what percentage of budget, of the one-year budget today has been spent or, or has come in? The total revenues that have come in, restricted revenues. The one thing we're tracking in that, that is, we'll see, we'll see where it goes by the end of the year. But COVID delays and supply chain delays, both for construction and development, application and approval process. But COVID delays and supply chain delays, both for construction and development, application and approval process. Significantly slowed down and reduced the amount of revenues we've gotten in from development review fees and those sort of things that we budgeted. That's the big delta in the budget. For what we budgeted for revenues coming in versus what we've received. So I think what you're seeing that that difference there, that's, that's really what that is.
I only see once a month, so I can't have nothing compared to from last month. I meant if I had one every month, I could. So we know where we're going, I mean, or every quarter, I, I just. It doesn't mean it looked like we're going backwards in this hole, but I know we're not, but what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, but the revenues, revenue, restricted revenues particularly for community development. It would have been coming in, those are trickling in a good bit slower than we had budgeted. Some of that we can't help, it's industry and we may have to amend the budget for the by end, I don't know, we're, we'll watch that. But what we do, what we track a bit more carefully and repeatedly every month is where our expenses are.
Right.
And what they have been doing is is staying reasonably well below budget, where they could be at this point. So how they'll reconcile at the end of the year, thankfully it's a two year budget, so we have time to adjust or track a longer period. But I think any discrepancy you're seeing, it's development, it's development review and approval revenues. That's the lag.
All right.
I just wanted to say I'm very excited for the new building system. With my tail between my legs, paying our, I did not yellow door finger because I forgot because it's not user friendly to have to go to type in your account number. Then I gotta go to your old email and find it and I'm like, how much do I owe? I don't know. I gotta go find the bill and, you know, it's just. Yeah, I think I got a door hanger one month for seven dollars past due. And, you know, it's just because I had a graph it on the previous month because I didn't tell them it's not a user friendly system, so. I am very excited for the new system and to be able to set up auto pay easily. And I just was hoping to get some clarity on the fuel tax. And maybe where we're at with that, just knowing how gas prices are going and just curious what the trend is looking like for that.
Last I looked, so those revenues go into the transportation bond fund. And to date, they've, they've trailed behind forecasts by a little bit, but not dramatically. We have some. Travel and freight didn't pick up as quickly as we thought after COVID. But it kind of came back fairly significantly, so we're not. On forecast, we're a little bit below how revenues come in relative to what we thought would come in, but not by a significant amount. So it's actually not, not too bad. So we'll just see how travel and the climate and stuff.
Yeah, I, I hear those figures every month. I think we're about where we should be. Through May, five, five times eight, forty percent, forty percent of what we were wanting to get, we were at about thirty five percent. You know, eight percent per month, eight times twelve, eight was expensive, twelve hundred percent. Kind of segmenting that way. Well, if we're, if we're tracking on where we want our revenue to be, we should be, you know, fortyish percent. We're around thirty five, thirty four, thirty five percent. So from a dollars perspective, that's. In a really good month, probably, but. We'll see. We, we didn't account for five dollars and eight cents per gallon when we, we did this. But, you know, the good thing is we'll have other ways to supplement those bond payments. The tough, tough will help, we can use transportation S T Cs, we'd be able to. To do a transfer there, it could help with some of the projects, but so for the gas tax, we'll just.
I think, I think on the low end, gas prices aren't great for people who might travel here from somewhere else. But I think that airline ticket prices, traveling elsewhere being more expensive with inflation, we might have a lot more people. Not staycation, but staying in Oregon and maybe buying more gas locally instead of going somewhere. So we'll see how it goes. It could go either way and my hope is that people don't go places. And they stay here and they, they buy the gas tools, we'll see.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Dave. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, in your package is the land use application for the previous month. It looks like Lennar is just moving forward as they should be. Any questions there?
Does anybody know how many they sold already or is that? You don't know that?
No, I'm, I'm sure.
Just wondering how that's going because they're building it pretty good. Not sure how the sales are going.
No, one of them is.
Right.
I see a couple sold signs, but yeah.
I went in their open house and they're set up, he doesn't rate, we're trying to get in. Their terms are pretty easy, it's one percent down. So, we need to finance it. So when I looked at it. He had eight.
Yeah, when I don't pronounce it, I think they had twelve sold, but yeah, so there, so this.
Any other questions? Okay. Next on the agenda, eight are resolutions, we've got a few to review. Eight A is resolution two one eight eight, adopting the new employee handbook. Maybe I'll turn this over to you. Before I do that, I just want to. Thank you again for going through and taking the council's questions and comments and, and suggestions. I know that was a lot of work for you and Robin as well, but really appreciate you. Being thorough and giving us this report, so.
Well, you're welcome. First off, I just wanted to say, you know, it's because of people like Robin, Bill, Jim. This doesn't really affect him, but and Lori, you know, everyone would be saying, you've done a great job. This is just one more way, for me, at least to take feedback from others and say, this would be something that would. Be helpful for them, for us, that we would like, you know, and to do it fairly and find a way to kind of threads the needle between. What can we do in North Plains that would be, you know, a little bit old and innovative and would separate us from other cities? But also knowing that, I said, a woman who's a bit older than Robin and her, through many hours of budget committee needs to be on base sure we're not. So that being said, as we know, the, the big discussion point last time was this. Personal time off P T O discussion. So before we get to that, I will say, I know there was a comment from Council Sheldon and, and others about the remote work policy. What, what we did there, that was just taking another sample policy from other, other cities and tweaking it for the way they. Meet our needs, but at least putting in some guidelines and some sideboards and doing it. Let's hope there's not another pandemic that we have to go through, but there will definitely be times when someone has to take it to level one. Or, you know, maybe has, has to begin some unseen travel, but we know that they can still work remotely. Well, these are the expectations that we at least want to set out. And but if you're going to be doing that in your home, in, in Oregon, we'd still expect you to be in the office two days per week, but. To be honest, this is going to be the trend, so we have to do this anyway because we'll be competing with everyone else. Already in interviews, this is what, you know, people are asking about this, they want to know this sort of information, but we're at least putting out that statement for it to. Say, these are going to be the terms, we expect to see you in the office and I, I think everyone would immediately say, it's nice to have people in office again. We can, we're a lot more collaborative, collaborative and get things done, I think a little bit more efficiently, but we still do that often. So getting to the P T O. So we, we had a couple meetings in between the last meeting, it took some of the council comments and concerns into consideration, we're that. We're that far apart there. Really, we looked again at the cap. And if you remember, the amount of P T O approval cap was just doubling what the annual rate could be. So we looked at that again and said, all right, that's, that was taken from another jurisdiction that they'd done. They said, okay, what we can do is just stick with what we have existing on the books, the current handbook, and that's three hundred hour. Just a three hundred hour cap for all employees, it's a matter of your employer for a year or fifteen years. So that's six to, to three hundred hours. That gives employees an incentive to take some time off, but it also, if we keep the opportunity for. An employee to cash out some, some hours, we think that's a good, a good sweet spot too, whether or not. They don't get to just accrue indefinitely, so keeping the three hundred hour cap. The other change too was for each of these tiers that you saw on June sixth that we currently have. Within one year of employment, after one year, after five years, ten, and so on. What we did essentially was just took off sixteen hours or two days from each of those times. For the accrual, what, what that would mean, what that represented would be having an eighty hour minimum, basically. Of, of sick time or emergency time. And that eighty hour minimum was what we want to see in any employee's bank anyway, if they want to try to cash out, but. The, the annual accrual would relate to eighty hours plus what they currently would receive for vacation. So you can, you can see an example here, within one year. This is on page three of that minimum. Eighty hours plus forty eight hours of our existing vacation time, we need to hold one hundred and twenty eight hours. The, the reason that's kind of a good number for both the city employees is, well, from the city's perspective. That's actually fewer hours than they offer for, for sick time, we currently offer eighty eight hours in for sick time. But from the employee's perspective, that eighty, that, that sick time, if you never get sick, you never get to use it. I didn't communicate a lot of hours of sick time, you know, I'll never get. But employees would have the chance to, to cash that out in the future, it's converted to P T O. It's a good, it's a good thing for them. And from the city's perspective, we're, we're basically offering them the same amount of time. If that makes sense, sick and inclined. If someone used all of their sick time and vacation time in one year that we already offered, that's what this would convert to. Now, a lot of these scenarios were, you know, we look at them at the worst case. Bill ran a lot of numbers and all that in China and admitted and promised to save them too. We approach these things on, from a fiscal standpoint anyway, on a worst case scenario. What, what is the biggest liability that the city may have? But that's typically now how it works because we, people will take time off. And they're, this is paid time off that they would even move anywhere and we won't encourage that, obviously. So that is the change between what you saw on June sixth, taking the feedback into account and tweaking those. Accrual hours a bit. And that's what's in the, that's what we chart on page three and then plus with a, a different, a different cap. The reason we're doing all this, the reason we've spent so many meetings like this, the reason we tried to find a, a good approach. Is for one, like we said last night, it'd been six years since the city had really. Adopted a new handbook, but it'd been a number of years before we really looked at some things, so it was definitely a good time to do that. And looking at a P T O system and looking at some of the flexibility you can offer and some of the incentives. In here could present for employees is also a bonus. Because we're, we've been looking at other cities as we're trying to do all this hiring and be competitive. And this is just another way that we can help be competitive and stand out a little bit. While being fair to employees and the city itself, so that was really made for us to, we need to do that. Bill, is there anything you want to add for the?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thanks, Andy. Yeah, so. You know, the question was asked, what kind of fiscal impact would this have? And the reality is, it's almost impossible to try to guess how much time people will take off versus. You know, how much they may cash out versus what have you. So Andy's correct, all of the numbers in the fiscal analysis reflect. The worst case scenario, meaning. All employees, as soon as they can catch hours out, will. So the analysis assumes, tries to identify the worst case scenario of cash out, cash out the door. For the city, you know, actually expensing current money out the door. I guess what I would say is, is just emphasize that overall, I mean, the big thing is to get different liability off the books. And the new system as it's proposed now compared to the old system. It really kind of is pretty similar in terms of what liability is, is allowed to be on the books in terms of vacation time or. P T O time under the new system. Over about six, seven, eight years, the two converge to be about equal. Just because of how easy or not these people to take time off. And so there, there isn't any significant difference in, in liability on the books. I think the biggest. Change with the P T O system is just that we have a number of employees who have just amassed a huge amount of sick time. And that's actually from an accounting perspective, isn't quote unquote. Liability on the books because we don't have to pay people out for that when they leave the city. But according to Boeing, that is benefit and we have to account for that. Those employees have, have fairly accrued that. So the system as we kind of try to put it together and propose here helps reduce that. Very significant. And then kind of gives a new, that's part of why the P T O system of combining sick time and vacation time kind of helps make up for that transition. So that's. Yep, Sean, at all. There's no big change in on the books liability for actual vacation versus P T O time. And the new system, but this does help us in, in reduce the amount of accrued sick time for a lot of employees who have been around for a while. And it's, it's there for the, the city has to deal with, so this helps do that.
Any questions or comments for the? Counselor Sheldon?
I appreciate you taking the time because one of my concerns is looking at accumulating liabilities. And I really wanted to know what the fiscal impact is when we make decisions like this because it's more than just a few words in the handbook. And so. Excuse me, I think that was done at least to my satisfaction, I feel. Okay, I have, I have a better understanding that we're not accumulating year over year extra liability. Carrying it farther forward in much larger sums and to me, I, I just. I wanted to get a better handle on it before I can support this and I think in my mind, it makes sense to me. It, it, it eases my concerns about increasing liabilities going down the road. And, and as far as the definition, I'm not opposed to remote work or flexible work. But I am opposed to lack of oversight and that that's not the policy, that's a problem that we'll have going forward, so. I'm not opposed to those things, it's for make sure that we have the checks and balances in place to make sure. That we can handle situations as they. Thank you.
Counselor Page?
At least take what they are, you know, everybody loves Friday off. And we have a face at City Hall to, not out, but. Reason working home that day, everyone has a face when you go to the city hall. And if not, oh yeah, one person has to do it and having the term who works that day.
Yeah, I mean, good questions, I guess first and foremost. From an organizational culture's perspective. I would want to set a reminder that. We're all working in public service, so we need to make sure that we're there serving the public. If someone wants to take the occasional Friday off, that's, you know, or work remotely. I mean, that's life, maybe that's going to happen, but I certainly do not intend for that to become a trend. I would see other permanent vectors would have the same. I would see other permanent directors would have the same um approach. And we would have discussions amongst staff too about what's been fair and that will to, to, to others.
So there's a policy here, the policy is we gotta work four or five days at, or it's gonna be hell out here.
And a regular discussion.
I'm just trying to figure out how it's gonna be safer for us to say, later on, if somebody gets terminated or they quit or something like that. I couldn't have these days off if somebody else did, and that's very to them and them being stuck into that. I'm just trying to figure out how, how we're gonna be able to defend against that by having a Friday.
Yeah, well, just like any policy, we'll, we'll be, we'll have the, the ability to change when we're ready for this at any time. And just think, uh, you know what, given three months of doing this, we need to really revisit this and tighten things and stuff. And the same goes for PTO or everything else, we have the ability to go back and rewrite some of these things. I think doing, you know, a year of remote work and then another year of kind of a flexible, weird situation while everyone's getting back to it, I'm sure it's the same in many other uh office settings. We've always had to kind of revisit what's working and what isn't. That's probably gonna be the best answer I have right now until we sit down and say, all right, look, we recognize that in three months, this could be, this could be an issue for the, for the good of uh the organization and the morale, let's make sure we tighten these things up and make it fair and connect with everyone. And certainly, the problems that we need to kind of list to, to balance there, so she may have some good feedback too.
So again, the city, we have employees that have a wide range of responsibilities, so the library is a sixty-week operation, and so having some flexibility in the schedule and also with our limited staff space, having the remote work option is really helpful for us. Um, and the way I schedule that is, you know, that is at my discretion and I stagger those remote days for my staff, so my full-time staff each have one day that could be for remote work if, um, if there's work that is best done in that kind of situation, like um material selection, budget, spreadsheets, things, report writing, um, planning, you know, there's certain kinds of things that are well-suited to remote work, and so they they have a, a day that's optional for that, and it's a different day from all the other staff, you know, so it's standard, and that's, I set that in the schedule. So those are us with a lot of managerial experience, I have now, I think fifteen years of managerial experience, know how to kind of manage these kinds of things, so.
So it's gonna be scheduled and everybody's gonna shut it.
Oh, I mean, uh, it works very well for us in the library, um, and it's scheduled by me, you know, by the manager. And operations of the library covers, so we cover, we make sure that our library operations are covered, so remote work's only possible when um in all the in-person functions are covered.
Yeah, the main question was just, is it scheduled and? This hasn't been, uh, you know, equity been across, so he says, well, they got Fridays on the whole time, and that's true.
There is, there one does have a Friday off um due to a spouse, special condition and that's something that she and I have worked out to, um, you know, it's an accommodation, and it works well for that because people who can make, self-manage their work, um, you know, it works well for, and if and if they can't, then we, we wouldn't, we would work on it together or, you know, find a different a different um solution for that, so.
Good morning. Any other comments or questions?
I don't, I'll just, probably makes a good point, because of our space constraints, this is something we helped out for anyway. Lori and Bill share an office right now, and they will, I guess it's not implicit in the schedule, I don't have them send me the schedule, but they'll be good once a week, created a, one will be doing a lot of Zoom meetings in the home, the other will be doing all of the minutes and everything, and it works, um, that way they can travel through the spaces and see staggering that way. So uh, we've already been, been, been doing that in some states, um, this time we didn't have a policy around it.
I get the sense that, that, that you and um, Bill and, and Robin and Chi, who are all work pretty well together. And that um schedules, there's always somebody in the office, um, you know, for the public, so I get the sense that that's pretty well organized, it sounds like a pretty good, well, we're actually boiling sheet.
Yeah, and I, I would say the finance department, we, there's always one, usually two people at the front. It's saying people come in, phone calls, um, then there's redundancy with worry um covering if something happens, and then if necessary, for whatever reasons, but I knew as well. So um, we maximize that redundancy, so, and, and the people want that on time off. That's the, we, we ask in advance, we schedule it, try to be fair about it, so.
All right, um, if there are any questions or comments, um, there is a sample motion in your pocket.
I'm going to adopt a position turning eighty to approve the NFID city of their claims appointment.
One second. One second. We have a motion on the table by Councilman Page, seconded by Councilwoman Pinkman, any discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, aye. There is none, motion carried, thank you, and thank you again. Uh, next item up is AB Resolution twenty-one ninety-four, that's the um, DEH, the, the contract renewal for legal services for Barry Elsner and Hammond.
Hey, uh, oh yeah, thanks, sorry, here, um, this, the uh, the current professional services agreement we have, expires in this one, this three-year um agreements. And uh, we actually, I don't remember, just, just approved a new one two years ago because we hadn't started in this first year of, of approval. So, um, but anyway, they thought that they, and jumped very quickly to this, this year. Um, so Spencer, um, Spencer Blaskin? Parsons, yeah, I had a buddy in Thomas Gaskin, I was like, yeah, I think that's, that's not that smart. Uh, so Spencer is uh, no longer with DEH. And they named Emily Madison, the, uh, the attorney for the workplace uh business. And Emily's been there a couple of years and worked a few different things. Um, so she would be the designated uh replacement for Spencer, and I gotta say, uh, she doesn't know all the issues like he does, because he's been working with this group for over a decade, but she's far more responsive answering my questions, I love to say for you, but uh, that's been nice. Um, so there, um, the fees in there have gone up in the last three years, that's going to be expected because that's what everyone's doing. I talked to a couple other cities um about their experiences with DEH and uh other firms um to see what, what others are experiencing of their contract at legal services. I got a, a call into the, to them too, because they use, only other firm that I know of, cities use to see what they're, uh, what they're looking at too. So, um, I'd only respect see uh increases in the twenties, but over a three-year period, when it even dropped about seventy-eight percent. Um, it's not surprising in this line of work, I think the good news is um, we're able to use their, rely, not rely on their services as much since I've been in the job a little bit more. We've got um very capable department managers, something that is, we're getting through this handbook that contributed to a number of hours, we managed to roll with the renewal, development agreements, some of those things, so um, we're actually not having to be so tight at the hip for, for the services as much. So uh, Emily would be here at the next meeting in August, she's gonna be here uh to talk about uh camping and homelessness in cities, but camping warnings, she wanted to speak to the council about that, and, and herself, get rid of the speed. So that is the extent of that.
Any questions or comments from council? If none, you have a sample motion in your packet and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution two one ninety-four to approve an agreement with Barry, Isner, and Hammond, LLC, for municipal legal services. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Page, discussion. Just for clarification, Andy, is she um, Madison, Ms. Madison, is she coming in July or August?
Oh, I think she's in May, July, nineteen.
July, okay, I thought you said August, but, okay, sorry for that. Okay, great, um, any other discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, aye. There are none, motion carried, thank you. And twenty-one ninety-six, uh, right, I'm sorry, AC Resolution number twenty-one ninety-six is updating the fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Since Bill's.
I'm good, thank you, Mayor. Um, we're at that time of year again where we take a look at and adopt, maybe we'll uh take a look at adopting a new fee schedule. Um, master fee schedule, so for everything we charge for this. And before you is the uh new fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-three, um, starting July first. As the memo states, the staff report states, this is the first year um where we're looking to raise fees for most, not all, but for most things that the city charges for, um, by um what inflation has been over the last twelve-plus months, so it's eight to ten percent. Um, most fees the city charges uh haven't been raised in years. Up until last year, as far as I can tell, um, all of the fees that the city charges um haven't been raised over a number of years, but during that time, the cost of those services has gone up by about fifteen percent. So the one, that was, that was, that was through last year. So you add on eight to ten percent more this year because of inflation, that's twenty-some percent. So what we're looking at this year is for most fees, not all, to go up by about maybe ten percent on average. There are some notable exceptions. Um, the new tough, you just approved that, that's not, what you just approved is as of July one, so that, that doesn't, that doesn't have an inflation factor. The SECs you just approved, that doesn't have an inflation factor for July one, that just became effective May twentieth. So that the inflation of, um, increase isn't affected there, doesn't, it doesn't affect that. Um, fees for the use of Jesse Mays Community Center, we're going to, we're still working on research on that, but we're gonna come back to you uh with some um homework on um how fees could be set for Jesse Mays users for different types of groups, as well as procedure to rent it out. Um, just to make it, we spent a lot of staff time going through and making sure reservations for Jesse Mays and the cost of it matchup and everything, so we're, we're gonna come back to you with more information there. So Jesse Mays fees are not in this, uh, going up in this. And then there were a couple others, franchise fees, um, those can't go up, and water rates, water rates uh are also or not in this inflation increase. So it's everything else, development approval, application, um, copies, um, all those different types of fees, that's what we're, that's what we're looking to increase just to try to catch up with inflation over the last eight, nine years, not just the last year, so that's what this is. So if you have any questions about that, I think you have your chance.
Questions, comments? Counselor Sean?
I prefer a different approach, but uh, you know, this is probably the most expedient, so I'm not gonna quarrel over that. I'd rather see us at some point before too much longevity, let's say another five years, I'd rather hire a PhD and uh find out, you know, exactly where costs are and set a basis, a cost, cost basis, which I think should have done at least every ten years. Adopting a three to seven percent per year, yeah, you know, and then adopting an actual per year increase and then incrementally increasing each year, not uh reaching out and guessing or half guessing that whether we're under water or over water. Um, you know, I, I just prefer a more pure, uh, you know, less end-to-end process, so that's my only element.
Counselor Sean?
Great points, um, there was some research put into um where some of the fees could be, well, actually business fees and some other ones, we'll, we'll, we're gonna come back to you with some of this. Um, I think, I think in taking a look at how much perhaps adjusting on some of the fees should be done without kind of a detailed study that you would like to see, what we did want to do was enhance cost recover, we know we haven't had for a number of years, but at the same time, not do anything that made it look like we, you know, weren't competitive or were trying to charge too much. The other thing I would note is that the, the planning manager that we would love to have had by now, the charge of that position was to very specifically go through all of our development application and related fees. And um, without that person, we just don't, we don't have that for you, um, this, so that's actually one of the big priorities when someone is hired and coming in the bus, um, getting the morning.
Any other questions or comments? You have a sample motion in your packet?
I'll move to adopt Resolution two one nine six to update the city's master fee schedule effective July one, twenty twenty-two.
Wait a first and a second. All right, first by Counselor Sheldon, seconded by Counselor Smith, any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, aye, hearing none, motion carried, thank you. Um, public hearing, we have a few to review this evening. Um, nine A is Resolution number twenty-one ninety-one, that's the city budget, city budget resolution for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three biennial and the tax rate. Bill or Andy, I'm sorry.
Oh, Joe, where did you come from?
No, okay.
I, I, I'm happy to take it, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
So we're getting into those, and the, the annual resolutions that you all have to take a look at and consider for really basically the next fiscal year moving forward, twenty-one ninety-one before you right now. Twenty-one before you, twenty-one ninety-one before you right now, um, is just your authorization to levy our permanent property tax rate. Ordinarily, this resolution also includes your approval of the, the annual budget that we do, but because it's a biennial budget you adopted last year, this resolution doesn't have that, it doesn't need to have that. So maybe that's why it looks like a thin, easy resolution. Thank you, that's a nice thing about biennial budgeting in this case. So um, this is just authorization to levy your, your regular permanent rate of two dollars seventeen cents for one thousand taxable assessed value. Very similarly to how you do every year.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain, there's a sample motion in your packet, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve Resolution twenty-one ninety-one to declare a ad hoc tax relief for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second? All second. All right, we have a, uh, Counselor Page first, Counselor Pinkman uh second, any discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, aye. There are none, motion carried, thank you. Resolution number twenty-one ninety-two, certifying the state revenue sharing obligations, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor, so the staff. Thank you, Mayor. So the staff report for twenty one ninety two is also the staff report for twenty one ninety three. But twenty one ninety two before you, state shared revenues that we get from the state of Oregon. Alcohol tax, cannabis tax, those sort of things, fuel tax revenue. Every year for the new fiscal year, the city has to consider and pass a resolution first that states we, the city, provide a number of different services to our residents that qualify us for shared revenues from the state. So that's what this resolution is, declaring that you as a city provide the various services that qualify you from the state of Oregon to give you shared revenues. So by authorizing resolution twenty one ninety two, you're reporting to the state that you qualify to receive shared revenues from the state of Oregon. That's all that is, seems technical, but it's all it is.
And resolution number twenty one ninety three?
Twenty one ninety three is simply your declaration that you're going to receive the revenues. So you have to declare you're eligible for it and then you want them or you will receive them in two different resolutions. Twenty one ninety three is we will receive those levels.
Okay, and it looks like we have a motion that includes both resolutions, that's acceptable? Or do we have to do them one at a time?
I suggest one.
Yes, that's okay. Any questions for, any questions for resolution number twenty one ninety two? I'll entertain a motion.
Now, so, one at a time, correct?
One at a time.
I move to adopt resolution twenty one ninety two to elect to receive state shared revenues and to certify the provision of multiple services that establish the health and ability of the city of North Branch to receive shared revenues for fiscal year two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I've got a second then.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Council Kendall, seconded by Council Fage, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Now we need a motion for resolution twenty one ninety three to declare the city's election to receive the state revenue shared, state shared revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
I move to adopt resolution twenty one ninety three to elect to receive state shared revenue and to certify the provisions of multiple services that establish the eligibility as a city of North Branch to receive shared revenues for fiscal year two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Council Kendall, seconded by Council Smith, a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Right, moving on, number, city manager report, ten A.
I just summarized in there in the last couple weeks of Friday news, but a couple things to note. I know I said this past Friday that we had eight interviews this week, actually it's nine. So we did the first one today, so we're interviewing five, and there were rare applicants in the downtown plan limitation, a little bit of tourism marketing, helping out with event planning and maybe pitching in, and this is the sort of downtown. So five applicants, we did the first interview today in the afternoon for public works director. First of those is tomorrow. Council Kendall is helping out with that and volunteering. He's got some public works and water and fire experience, can help someone take Blake's place on that panel, so. For, for those. And speaking of public works, it's also just, I just want to give Andrew and I'm here a big shout for working hard and showing up and taking on more responsibilities and in doing what they were doing before and then some, and then the same goes with everyone else in the office. You know, like Bill said earlier, we would have a planner by now, Lori wouldn't be looking at daily applications anymore, she still lives.
And setting up the room for meetings.
Yeah, but everyone's picking in and I'm grateful for that. You know, can't say enough about that, we're good people, it's good to hold on to. So a lot of those interviews, we do have some applicants too for the other utility worker positions, so. Those maybe will be next week and the week after, we'll take a break from some of the interviews. But hopefully here within the next couple of weeks, I'm going to talk with those guys and see what they think. I'd love to have a public works director on board to be part of those interviews, so I'm going to talk with him here to see see what we can do, we have to prolong and think. Like get us staffed up in. Other than that, Father's Day for those that celebrate it, it's nice to see someone back.
Any questions for, any, Council Smith?
Of course. I still see that our auto shop is still hanging out. Is there an update on that one?
They will be hanging out this month. Yeah, it isn't, I mean, civil matter, I don't want to get into it too much. But what I've been told, I would expect to see a change this summer.
My second one was the planning commission, I noticed a couple items on there. And how much time and effort do we want to spend with purple park?
Was it, oh, the planning commission referred to it?
Well, it's at the planning commission.
Oh.
But it was on the three J report.
Oh, right, right.
So I saw there. So I
Yeah.
This year we'll get two months' usage out of my tenant's rent.
Yeah, so we talked about this last week at the Parks Board meeting, and we spoke about it here. Knowing what, what we're trying to determine, what it would take to get a functional usable park to have it more play, play equipment there, the most cost effective and frankly feasible alternative there, because it's, it appears to be, it's just wetter and wetter every year, so the ground table is, the water table is rising a lot. Would be to just to take out the playing place structure, cap it with soil or whatever we have to do, and it's a clean space. And if some time down the road, it becomes a small dog park, something like that, like a small dog park. Because the problem is still though, even if you look where the play equipment is, oh, even if that looks like it's drying out from the back part of the lot, it's still extremely soggy, and I think it will be done. We'd have to be very hot summer to get to September and it's dried out kind of thing. And then you're, like you said, then you're back to, okay, next month it's going to start raining again. So we're, we're looking at, we have a meeting with CWS coming up. It's going to become a broad comp, it's be within, on some other storm and water issues in the city. We're doing that with the engineer, that's going to be one of the topics is what feasibly can we do there? We've talked about, as soon as it turns out, just take the play equipment out and then it's not liable.
That's our, that's our suggestion too, because it is a liability weight, it's now. I mean, we do have it taped off kind of, still. And the other thing I saw on there was the the Washington County MSTPI application for a roundabout here on Flinco. And with a new walking path and all that, I've never seen a roundabout that was kind of sick. Trying to cross, I'm not sure how, how far we are to trying to do that and why are we going to do it? And is something we want to do?
What I can say is, it's all, it's all.
I don't think I've ever seen a safe one, so.
I have, when I, I said I didn't saw the main park and I love the cars coming down, there's the, there's a media there. And you will walk in the house, it's a two door car, and it was, I'm missing the reason, I don't know. I see that little beam, yeah, it's like, and what it is, it do the lights and each one has lights that go across the street as well, so. Lots of visual.
It's a double crossing that way. Yeah, well, most of the roundabouts I've ever seen are outside this in the area, so that's my concern, I don't, it's a lot of money to spend on something like that. I'm just not sure, that's, I wouldn't want to go there, I'm not sure, has anybody else?
What, so forgive me, Andy, could you just give me a high level view on what he, what that topic is? I mean, I understand what the topic is, but I did not look at the planning commission's agenda.
No, 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 they didn't have it as a item, I think it was from the three J report that we would have all seen on the last meeting. And there, that's just one of the tasks, when you're looking, they helped us with the end step complication for roundabouts, yeah. So that, that project is in the TSP, it's either that or a signalized intersection. Man, I know over the cost of, over the lifecycle cost of an intersection, if it's signalized, those are higher operating costs around the mountain, it's not, because it's just traffic going around it. Now getting to what you're seeing, pedestrians AD, biking pedestrians AD, it's not, it's not an engineering feat to me, a roundabout pedestrians, from what I understand. Bicycling is a little bit tougher because you have, you can have conversions of bicycle lanes and sidewalk or I was in a roundabout just the other day and the cyclist was beside me as I was going around, because they didn't want to take a sidewalk. That to me is the biggest challenge, but the engineers are cheap, so we pay them to come up with good ideas.
And when they put them in, in Forest Grove, there's two roundabouts, now there's three. And cyclists, we never use the sidewalks, we stay on the streets.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I bicycled out to work today, didn't have a bike lane, and I got hit. It just, sometimes you just have to have this understanding, understanding who's driving and who's on the bicycle in respect to it. From a, a traffic though improvement, the traffic safety perspective, I mean, we have a different, but my understanding, we strive on the roundabouts, a very nice way to go, because you avoid, you know, a lot of collisions and T-bones and.
With all the big trucks like that coming through there. It'd have to be pretty good size roundabout actually for trucks.
Yeah, potentially, I mean, that's, we haven't even gotten to any sort of engineering yet, so this is exploring that with the, with the rider label sort of like. And what that end step is specifically, it's a grant from the county, and we ask, we ask for about ninety percent of the cost of it in that grant. We're hopeful that we'll get funded, but we'll see, they're going to do a road show on projects later this summer, going on the county to get that.
Anyone else?
Yes, in general, I was going to do the water building that's, that, that I did, but I was going to go to the artists, talk to people. Sidewalks and the water building would be major concerns that we had, so we've got them both addressed. Good job, guys. Thanks.
Are there any council reports?
I think the planning commission, it lasted, I think, five minutes. So, not unhappy.
Easy peasy. All right.
A good joke about, maybe they would jump in and be part of the national night out, the Parks Department, planning commission, but I got stairs, so I'm not sure. But I know we talked last year about bringing up the national, that the parks would play a bigger role in it. So I'm not sure if that's something we still want to try and do, I know it's Bernard and King both helped out last year, but two of them here, so. I'm not sure.
Well, it looks like Council Kendall is the exhibition for next month, so maybe you can bring that up to the Parks Board next month.
Could be the.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the new, remember the, you know, today at the Historical Society of Mountain, they have them every year. So they came up the Jackson family, would like to donate some more money to, is there a Jackson park that'll be named in that new development? Is that correct?
I know.
Workers talk about it, or?
I thought there was a Jackson.
Okay, so they would like to, they're talking, the family would like to donate some kind of a, to the Jackson family, because it's been huge and they would like to maybe help donate some money towards that, maybe put another rock there or something with a rack on it. There's talk of that, so I don't know if that's feasible, was that a big park, the Jackson one? Maybe I didn't.
Frankly, I don't, I don't know which one it is.
It's built, right?
Yeah, it's five parks, I only know one of them.
Okay. Any other, all the other concern was the, the right away that, working with the developer that, that road that, that's still in, that's still, they said they would help with that, so is that still, have you heard any talk about that? That Highway Road One?
Yeah, they just wanted to make sure they have that access, and that
Right.
that access is a, is a public easement that's Main Street, so they won't, they won't for sure have access. I think all the developer said was, where Main Street terminates, we could put some sort of gate or something, we'd have a connect.
And that would be in the one, phase one or phase two, three?
Probably case three.
All right. Have a bill, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have, I've been on commission for a couple of weeks, just, just trying to get back at this swing of things here. A couple of things just to report. You know, the live golf courses, golf tournament is coming up at the end of the month. There's a lot of a lot of talk online about it, and I've been approached by a few organizations, The Washington Post, some of their White House Office, and Portland Business Journal, and Coin. And my message has been the same, so I'm just giving you a ball again, another heads up. We will have a security briefing this week, just to hear what their security plan is for traffic control and all of that sort of thing, so I'm sure once we get that information, Andy will probably share that with us very fast, just so that you all are aware of what that looks like. And let's see, the other thing that's, no, I guess, I really, I guess that's about it. I believe that the MPA will be putting the garlic festivals sign up on the highway, so you'll start to see, you'll see that this week as well. Andy mentioned the road show for the end step for the county, that will be coming up this summer. If you do see that, thank you all for the comment, so if you could take, take the time and look that up and maybe if you're compelled to give your opinion on some of those projects, they want to hear feedback. And I think that's about it. Anyone else?
There was a comic book today, Mr. Van Damme was up there, and he could talk more about Longdale, but it just goes on and on, there's just so much fun with that man. He's writing, he's written another book, another three hundred books, hopefully to have him ready for the garlic festival. He's added, I think, about six or eight stories. He was talking about, pops up there and people and probation, and then just, he just goes on and on and on, just amazing that he can retain all that information, which is wonderful.
I'm glad he's writing, I love it.
Yeah, it was good to see him up there today.
Good deal.
So it's fun stuff.
All right. All right, if there's nothing else, then.
I just, I, I know, one of the reasons we kind of jam packed tonight's meeting, I think, was to take Gillette dip off in terms of the holiday, and then we'll get back on track. I included the calendar in there, kind of in a brief edition, I think, for the sports events. I included the calendar in there, kind of, in the presentation, I think, for the forms of us.
I don't think that's spared, because I wasn't taking off anywhere.
We wouldn't want you to miss a meeting, I'd say, no.
Good, thank you for, for the reminder, I appreciate that. All right, well, I will give you all back your evening, we'll go ahead and close the city council meeting at eight thirty.